Okay, we're gonna call, come back from our closed session and call our open session open. We're gonna ask our councilors or anything to report out of the closed session.
No act, excuse me, no actions were taken this evening.
All right, can you please call, roll?
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Enscore?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Mayor Gasnow?
Here. And Councilmember Enscore will lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you. Okay, we have no acknowledgements tonight. We do have four items on our consent calendar. Number one, approval of the regular meeting minutes from the November 2nd, 2015 council meeting. Receive and file a warrant claims list for the period October 24, 2015 through November 6, 2015. Number three, receive and file the bi-weekly payroll report for the period ending October 31st, 2015, paid on November 6, 2015. And number four, receive and file monthly budget to actual financial report of the city's major operating funds for the month of October 2015. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring you back to the council. Do I have any motions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar, items one through four.
I'll second.
We do have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. All right, we do have a presentation tonight. We have non-number five, presentation by the Del Norte Childcare Council regarding the Wonder Bus program. Mr. Palazzo?
I believe Ms. Scores in the audience to present this item?
Nope. Nope. Ms. Fugate?
Ms. Fugate. Good evening. So Patty Vernelson could not be here today, who is the retired, thank you, who's the retired executive director of the First Five Del Norte. And Lisa Morris, who is the Wonder Bus coordinator, is out ill today. So I'm gonna be presenting. My name is Melody Fugate. I'm the executive director of the Del Norte Childcare Council. And the Wonder Bus is a contract that we have with First Five Del Norte. And so I'm gonna show you a video that was made by the First Five Vista and Wild Rivers Community Foundation Vista. So I'm gonna show you that video first.
Here in Del Norte County, families who visit children aged zero to five are almost entirely monotonous. The longer a public library presents, they're always looking to outline areas in Del Norte County, including the Gatsby and the Gatsby and the other. You don't always have transportation available to get to them. How can early voters be provided to the children that need these areas during such a central stage of development? First Five happens, and it gives the parents a little reminder. This is a bus call. The Wonder Bus is designed specifically for children, so it is welcoming, and it encourages them to come on and feel comfortable immediately. And then they can start exploring, they can play, they engage, and their brains are open to learning.
Kids enjoy something different. One of us is different.
The Wonder Bus is a mobile dungeon library and creative learning center for children and their families, as well as a hub of resourceful roles for programs or about programs in Del Norte County.
I enjoy the excitement of kids doing that bus as well as when they see other places and outside of the area, seeing great new performances.
While this game of the bus, children and caregivers will engage in story time first and then they get to play. And playing includes the free use of a creative learning table for crafting, coloring, or manipulating toys. The children adore the Wonder Bus. They make some fun every time and in every visit on their visit. Last year, the Wonder Bus served 3,102 children. And this year, this bus serves even more. The Wonder Bus are schools, preschools, apartment complexes, community events, and other community gatherings within the halls around Del Norte County. However, it has plans of serving even more children in even more locations. There are several more sites on the way to us hoping that the Wonder Bus can be installed at their locations. While First Five is committed to accomplish the Wonder Bus, the demand has been greater to current funding resources. To sustain the programs the Wonder Bus provides and expand to new areas of Del Norte County in need, we need more staff. Help us fulfill our dreams and create partnerships for the children of Del Norte County. Become a member of the brand of the Wonder Bus and make a donation for major corporations. Edwards and Halls and the Forum. The Wonder Bus is a collaborative effort funded by First Five, both the part of the Del Norte Childcare Council, the Del Norte County Department of Children and the City Council, and the Del Norte County Office of Education.
Thank you. So, right now, First Five in partnership with the Del Norte Childcare Council, we are renegotiating our MOU, and we are writing a new MOU for all of our partners. So our partners are Del Norte Childcare Council, the County of Del Norte, City of Crescent City, the Del Norte County Library, and those are, and First Five. So Jean has asked us to bring to the councilmen and women a report on the Wonder Bus and what we're doing. So the Wonder Bus has a focus on early literacy. And this is our 2014 and 15 data that you're gonna see. So the Wonder Bus has a new mission, and our mission is to travel throughout Del Norte County and develop learning partnerships with parents and caregivers, zero to five. So our goals are, out of a First Five school readiness assessment that First Five did over the last three years, we saw that there was a gap in literacy. So the Wonder Bus has, well, excuse me, First Five has decided to really focus its wonder, its literacy library on early, focus on early literacy. So what I'm saying is, First Five and the Del Norte Childcare Council were in partnership to implement school readiness programs. And First Five has really decided to take a step back and let the Family Resource Center facilitate those school readiness programs. And now we're focusing on strictly early literacy and using the Wonder Bus as a tool to do that in the community. So there, so our ability to participate successfully at circle time, we stay focused, we have, we handle frustration with the children, we control impulses, and we engage with books with children during our story time on the Wonder Bus. So one of the things that we do is, First Five has a campaign of talk, read, sing. And we implement that into all of our programs that we do on the Wonder Bus. There is a focus for Del Norte children entering into kindergarten, that rhyming is something that has, children are not prepared in rhyming, and also their social emotional is lacking for those children who are entering kindergarten. So the Wonder Bus is using its programs to really focus on those, to help children prepare for kindergarten. So we have books, and books, and more books on the bus. We do a survey at each one of our stops, and we engage, parent engagement is part of the piece of the Wonder Bus. And one of the things that we do is we incentivize those parents to fill out that survey. And we give books as, as a gift for them to fill out that survey. And what that survey is asking is, are you reading to your children? And if you're not reading to your children, why? And that's a sensitive subject, because some of it is adult literacy. Some parents can't afford books. So there's a vast variety of reasons of why parents are not reading to their children. And if they are, we encourage them to continue by giving them another book. So books can, we have a lot of donated books. And they can be donated, dropped off at the Family Resource Center or at the Del Norte Childcare Council. So our advocates are loving and caring individuals, and they're very creative, and they love working with children. And it takes a special person to drive that bus. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's very big. And it's very intimidating. But we get, all of our advocates are trained through the school district. They're another one of our partners. And I believe I left them off in the original five, so, sorry, school district. Preschool and Headstarts, we visit there. With the new focus of early literacy, we've really decided to peel back where early literacy is already being taught to the children, such as the preschool sites. We don't visit the preschool sites this year. We're really focusing on the outskirts communities, as well as places like apartment complexes, and the farmer's market, the Youth and Family Fair, places like that where both parents and children are attending. Here's one of our story times on the bus. The back of the bus, if you've never been on, that is the back, you can see out the back window there, and this is one of the story times. The advocates read, and there's usually a theme focused, and we're gonna see that in a little, here we go. So for July, August, and September, these are the topics, the themes that were implemented throughout the entire month at every Wonder Bus site. We try to focus on whatever the event, the season, whatever's happening in the community at the time. Obviously, October, November, December are going to be themed around the holidays. And then wintertime, and we talk about our feelings. Dr. Seuss is gonna be talked about in March. It's just really a wonderful program. So those are the different topics of the month. So at every First Five event, and every Wonder Bus stop, we serve Potter the Otter water. And he encourages children to hydrate on healthy beverages instead of, you know, sugar beverages and things like that. So we always offer water. So some of our community stops and special events are listed here, the Bi-National Health Fair, the Community Baby Shower, Downtown Crescent City Farmer's Market, and also the Saturday Market, Del Norte Childcare Council's Holiday Open House, Family Fun, the Fourth of July Parade. We realized very quickly that we did not, we had over 1,000 handouts, and we, about halfway through the parade, all of those handouts were given out. So there's a lot of people that attend our parade. It's also up at the Gasky Market on Sundays, and that's in conjunction with their farmer's market. So this is just a picture of what it looks like when the bus is parked at your event. You can see there's Potter the Otter water is there. We have, that's Patty Dodge. She's one of our Wonder Bus advocates. Behind her, you'll see a table with books and resources. We always try to engage parents with our resources. And then you can see the little tables set up there for crafts and, and some cognitive and fine motor skill happening there in the bucket. So we also make special events. We attend things like the Gasky Raft Races, the Hand-on Health Express. We park at Hidden Creek Apartments. We participated in the Seamless Summer Lunch Program at the Family Resource Center this year. We've been at National Kids Day, Potter's Picnic, Shop for a Hero at Walmart, that's, works with Casa. We attended the World Breastfeeding Family Day, Youth and Family Fair. So this is just a few of our stops that we've highlighted. The Wonder Bus is also available for special events, if you would like to rent the bus for your event. As long as you are not charging for a child to come in, it's usually free if you're serving children zero to five. However, for example, the Childcare Council's Rockin' at Rowdy, we paid to have the Wonder Bus there at our event at a $25 an hour fee. So that's available for community members and community partners if they'd like the bus to come to their event. And you can contact the Wonder Bus Coordinator, Lisa Morris, for that. Learning is fun on the Wonder Bus. We make every visit rememberable, memorable, and, and worth coming back. So we want to thank our partners, which are First Five Del Norte, the Del Norte Childcare Council, County of Del Norte, Health and Human Services City of Crescent City, Del Norte County Office of Ed, and our newest partner, Del Norte County Library. I'm not gonna read you these stats. You've got them in your report, but the numbers speak for themselves. The last coordinator, when she was reporting out to the Board of Supervisors, said the most difficult part about children and the Wonder Bus is for the, when the parents, when it's time to leave. So the parents have a difficult time on the bus, because the children never want to leave. So if you have any questions? About the PowerPoint, if not, I do want to say that the partnership with, with the childcare, excuse me, with the Wonder Bus is, it's $1,000 annually. And the city has been a partner with the Wonder Bus and First Five for many years, I believe since its inception into the Del Norte County. That money goes into our maintenance fund, and it's, can be very expensive to maintain the bus. Right now, the bus is needing painting. The roof of the bus, the top of the bus is starting to rust, and so we need minor repairs, cabinet work inside of the bus, carpet cleaning, things like that. So that maintenance fund helps us, you know, keep the bus on the road. So we do have a new partner this year, which is the Del Norte County Library, and they've committed to $2,000, $1,000 for maintenance and $1,000 to help augment operating expensive expenses. So the bus is in preparation to be painted. And so we are going to be really working with the literacy work that's going on in Del Norte County. And our bus will, it will display things like, the First Five slogan right now is retoxing. They're, we're gonna have things on the bus that, you know, there's power in your words, and, and things like that are gonna be painted on the bus. So the Wonder Bus is parent engagement focused, as well as serving children zero to five and introducing them or continuing literacy for Del Norte County. So I heard a sad statistic today, sixty-six percent of our children are not prepared for kindergarten when they enter. And so the Wonder Bus is a tool that can be used throughout the community to help, you know, decrease that percentage. So does anybody have any questions for the Wonder Bus?
Well, I, I do. So are all the activities coordinated, or can children, they do, they can, they just go in and pick things to do?
It is coordinated. However, once a child comes on the bus, they're introduced to the activity that's, no child is forced to sit at circle time. So we always read a book. And whatever the book is, you saw on the video, I think it was Vegetable Stew or something like that. So the craft is geared around introducing vegetables to children. So they're not forced. There are a lot of things to do on that bus. So if they want to sit, they can. They're encouraged to sit and listen, participate in the craft, and then move around and navigate through the bus, as well as, there's usually two advocates at each stop. And so one advocate is engaging the parent, one advocate is engaging the child.
That's what I thought, because I was listening to KHSU on my way back home from Eureka today, and they were talking about a Montessori school. And so, to me, I was kind of imagining that our Wonder Bus is kind of like a traveling Montessori school in a way. So I think it's wonderful, and I'm very pleased that the city is a partner with the Wonder Bus. And I, I really feel that it's a great asset to our very young children in the community. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I could add, just the contract that's been mentioned with the partners is being updated, and should be in front of the council in the next month or so.
Great. Thank you. It'll be hard to follow that. Nice presentation. But we are now on the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council in any manner that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can refer to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Please come on forward.
My first time, so I don't know how the procedure works, but, good evening, Mayor Gasnow, and members of the council. My name is Ku Wu, and I'm one of the elder members of the Maung community. Tonight, I'm just here, I just wanna, on behalf of the Maung community, I just want to invite all of you, and my fellow community members, too, everyone as well, but especially you, to our New Year's celebration this year. It's gonna be on December 5th, from 9:00 to 4:00, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Crescent Oak Middle School. Traditionally, this is the, the one and only holiday we have in the Maung culture. And it usually runs about three days. And so everyone, every villages that does the New Year's celebration would cease work, and everyone comes together, reflecting on the old year, and welcoming the new year. And it's, it's probably the only time, taking away from work, to actually just mingle and find out how your neighbors are doing, reconnect with everybody else. At this year's celebration, we, here in America, we celebrate slightly differently. So this year, we are going to have entertainers in the auditorium at Crescent Oak. We will also have volleyball tournaments and basketball tournaments in the gyms. We encourage, and we would love to have everybody joining us in all of these activities. It's not just for the Maung folks. It's just not for the Maung community. It's for everybody. It's, we welcome everyone. We would love to see all of you there, at least a few of you guys. Maybe one or two of you could come join us at the, at the opening ceremony. All you have to do is just chant with us in Maung for about five minutes, and, oh, no, you don't have to, just stand there and, and help us open the ceremony. That would, that would be great enough. Anyways, it, it's gonna be on December 5th, from 9:00 to 4:00. Lunch is at 12:00. If you're unable to be there the whole time, you could just be there for lunch and enjoy the traditional and cultural food, see some of the entertainments, mingle with your neighbors. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We hope to see everyone there. Oh, and if you are there, please let me know, and so we could recognize you if you're there.
Thank you very much.
I've been to, been to it before, and it's, it's a fabulous day. So, thank you for coming.
Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing no other public comment, I'll close public comment. And we are now going to adjourn to the Housing Authority. Hey, let's see here. We are going to call the order, and we're gonna roll call for the Housing Authority.
Board Member Holly?
Here.
Board Member Enscore?
Here.
Board Member Murray?
Here.
Board Member Short?
Here.
Chair Gasnow?
Here. And so see, we have no reports, public comment period. Would anybody like to make any public comment about the Housing Authority? Seeing no public comment for the Housing Authority, I'll close that. We have the consent calendar. We got three items. We have one, approval of the regular meeting minutes from October 19th, 2015, approval of the warrant claims from the period October 10th, 2015 through November 6, 2015, and three, consider and approve 2016 payment standards for HCV PGM. Okay, is there any public comment on our consent calendar for the Housing Authority? Seeing no public comment for that, and bring you back to the council. Do I have any discussion or motions?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please go ahead and pull the vote.
Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Board Member Enscore?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Board Member Short?
Yes.
Chair Gasnow?
Yes, all right, that passes unanimously. We have no further business in the Housing Authority, so we will adjourn to our next scheduled meeting, August 17th of 2015? I don't think so. So it'll be next, next month, on our second meeting?
It will be December 21st.
Why, thank you, December 21st, 6:00 p.m. Okay, let's go back. Now we are adjourning from the Housing Authority, and we are going to convene as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Okay, we don't have to worry about doing roll call. We're all still here. We have no reports, presentations. We do have public comment period, if anybody would like to make any public comment on the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Seeing no public comment, we'll close it there. We do have one item on our consent calendar. It's the approval of the regular meeting minutes from October 19th, 2015. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar item? No, I'll close that, and we'll come back to the council. Do I have any motions or discussion?
I move approve consent calendar, item number one.
Second.
All right. Please pull the vote. We have motion and a second.
Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Board Member Enscore?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Board Member Short?
Yes.
Chair Gasnow?
Yes, that passes unanimously. There is no more business for the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, and we will reconvene on that meeting on December 21st, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. So now we are back to our city council meeting, and we have a few public hearings. So, item number eight, hold a public hearing, waive forereading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number 790, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Crescent City, adding chapter 17.92, reasonable accommodation to Title 17, zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code, excuse me, and take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo?
And introduce Mr. Taylor to present this item?
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. As most of you are aware, we're in the process of updating our housing element. We're in our fifth year. In order to move forward with our new housing element, we need to do some amendments to be in compliance with our existing housing element, and really overreaching over that, we'd be in compliance with state and federal housing laws. So reasonable accommodations ordinance, ordinance is being proposed tonight. Just a few applicable laws would be the Federal Fair Housing Amendment Act, 1988, California Fair Employment and Housing Act, and the State's Housing Element Law. And so really what the ordinance, what the laws are really mandating is that cities and counties in particular remove impediments to accessing fair housing. And in this case, it's for fair housing for persons with disabilities. And so what the reasonable accommodation ordinance does, it allows, it's a framework, and it allows a process by which persons with disabilities can request reasonable departures from our land use and zoning ordinances. So a good example would be, you know, for development, we have setback standards. So say somebody needed to have a handicapped access ramp, but they weren't able to meet the front yard setbacks or side yard setbacks. So they could come, this ordinance would allow a process by which they can come to the city and make a formal request to have a departure from, to that zoning code. So maybe ask for reduced setback to allow for that access ramp. Again, the reasonable accommodations ordinance, if it passed, will put some compliance with program D 2.2 of the current housing element. And I'll go through just portions of the ordinance itself. And really what it does, it lays out, you have your purpose and your applicability. But then, at section 17.92.030, you have your application requirements. And this really sets out the standards by which somebody first, you know, was able to get an application, what they need to include in the application, how they submit the application. It also includes how the application is reviewed. If it's a standalone request, say, for like a departure for ramp, for example, the Director of Community Development will look at that request to make a determination within 45 days. However, if it's attached to, say, a development of, say, apartment complex, so there's other approvals that have to be made, then it would be heard at the same time, that would go forward before the planning commission, and then determination made at that time. And of course, any determination of the community development director can be appealed to the planning commission as well. And then, section 17.92.050, findings and decision. So, that really outlines, you know, what findings need to be made to make a decision to either approve or deny a request. That's pretty much the general purpose of the ordinance. I mean, I answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I had sent an email, and I was wondering if, I didn't see whether or not, was this owner only, or were people who were renting, does it apply to them as well?
Somebody who's, I mean, renting could make, could ask for the application, but ultimately, they have to, have to be an application with the owner's approval. And we can't approve that somebody make changes to somebody's property without the owner's permission. I mean, that's standard in any building, you know, building permit application anyways.
Okay, because that makes sense, but it didn't really say, I wasn't real clear about it, so I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly.
Yeah, and that's pretty standard across the board for any type of planning or building application. We would always have to make sure that they either, one, they were the owners, or two, they had approval from the owners.
Well, how do we verify if the owner approved it, if the renter came in with the application, is what I'm wondering?
Yeah, we would contact the owner, and we would tell them, you need to bring us something in that states, you know, something from the owner, and whether that's, you know, a deed showing that they own the property.
They don't care if it's modified, then. The owner would have to give their permission to you, or if they, if they don't have the verification, then we verify it?
They should be able to verify it. I mean, if they're renting the property, or they have some control over the property, they should be able to make that verification.
Okay. So, if, okay, so if somebody is renting, and they bring in an application, do we just say, you need to bring in something verifying it? Because I don't, I think that that would be a lot of legwork for our.
Correct. We do. We put it on them. It's on them to either provide proof of ownership or proof that they have permission. We always request that.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Eric, the very last part of the ordinance itself talks about rescission of grants of reasonable accommodation. Is that where we capture, if, for example, we build a wheelchair ramp, and we make an adjustment, and the resident, you know, moves, or something else happens, that they are no longer in that facility, do they, do they then have to remove the ramp that's been built that is contrary to our usual building?
No, I think what you're looking at here, and I'll read it, it's any approval or conditional approval of an application under this chapter may be conditioned to provide for its rescission or automatic expiration under appropriate circumstances. So, say, I mean, that would be a good example, right? Somebody said, hey, I'm renting this property. I'm, you know, going to be here from this time to this time. So, we can set a time limit on it, right? It's a conditional approval. So, that could be one of the conditions of approval. It's good for one year. After a year, you come back, or it just automatically expires.
And that, and that it be removed at the end of the need?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Eric? Okay, so, at this time, we have to open up our public hearing, and so, anybody who wants to make any public comment on this can come on up for the ordinance for reasonable accommodation. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing no public comment, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to bring it back to the council for any further discussion or a motion.
I move approve ordinance 790, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding chapter 17.92, reasonable accommodation to title 17, zoning of Crescent City Municipal Code, municipal code, excuse me.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we go on to our next public hearing, number nine. Hold a public hearing, waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number 791, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending chapter 17.04, definitions by adding section 1704.179, emergency shelters, section 17.04.476, supportive housing, and section 17.04.484, transitional housing, to title 17, zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code, take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. Again, excuse me, this proposal is tied to our existing housing element. I don't know if you're familiar with the SB 2 that was passed a few years ago, requiring that all jurisdictions adopt definitions basically for transitional and supportive housing. And basically, what state law requires that local governments view transitional housing, supportive housing, as residential uses, and that those uses are allowed in any residential district and are subject only to the same requirements that any other residential use would be subject to. So, for example, would be all your applicable setback, your building standards, anything that would be applied to any other residential use in that zoning district. Again, we have both the definitions for transitional supportive housing, and these are both based in the California Health and Safety Code. So, these are definitions that were prepared by the legislator. And the kind of the biggest difference between transitional, transitional housing developments are buildings configured as rental housing developments but operated under program requirements that call for the termination of assistance and recirculation of assisted unit to another eligible program received at some predetermined future point in time, which shall be no less than six months, where your supportive housing really doesn't have a termination deadline, and it can be attached or not attached to other supportive services. Again, we have included a definition for target population. It's defined by the state. Are there any questions about the definitions, rather than just reading them out?
All right, we're going to open up this public hearing. Is there any public comment on these definitions being added to our municipal code?
And there's the emergency shelter. Do you want me to go over that definition as well?
Oh, sure.
Because again, emergency shelter, we're also asking that that be adopted. I kind of lumped all these together. Emergency shelter is kind of tied to a separate ordinance, but also tied to this as well. The state also has mandated that we adopt these emergency shelters by right. So, right now, we're just asking for the definition, which again, is the same definition as in the government code for emergency shelters. So, since these were all amendments to our definition portion of our zoning code, I just felt it was prudent just to bring them all forward at the same time.
All right, does cover all three?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is that all three of them?
Correct.
All right. Okay, so now, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody want to make any comments on these three definitions being added to our municipal code? Seeing no public comment, we'll close this public hearing and bring it back to the council for any discussion, motions?
I just had a question as to form. Are we just introducing this, and then this comes back to us for approval at a later meeting? Is that what I understand?
That is correct. This is the first reading on the ordinance introduction. Next council meeting will be a second reading and adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Did you?
Yeah, I have, Mr. Taylor, under the definition for emergency shelter, I'm just wondering, from a definition standpoint, because it states here that the length of stay is not more than six days and is typically less, I'm thinking of how that would fit into some type of disaster scenario that we might experience here, where we could have people who have been displaced from their homes that may be displaced for longer than six days. Do we need to look at that definition?
No, this definition doesn't really apply to emergency situations such as a natural disaster. I mean, at that point, especially a declaration for a natural disaster, I mean, this doesn't apply to those situations.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Any motions?
I move that we waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number 791, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending chapter 17.04, definitions by adding section 17.04.179, emergency shelters, section 17.04.476, supportive housing, and section 17.04.484, transitional housing, to title 17, zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. All right, we have one last public hearing here. I went, there we go. Number 10, hold a public hearing and receive input regarding the 2014-2019 City of Crescent City draft housing element, take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Taylor?
So, well, our existing housing element was completed back in 2009, so it was good for the five-year period from 2009, 2014. So, we're now in the process of preparing our 2014-2019 housing element. Housing element is one of the seven mandated elements of our general plan, although the housing element is the only element that is required to be updated every five years. Housing element law was really enacted in 1969, and mandates that local governments adequately plan to meet the existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. So, really, the intent of the housing element is for local governments to adopt land use plans and regulatory systems, which provide opportunities for, do not unduly constrain, housing development. Really, what it does, it sets goals and policies to allow for a variety of different types of housing and housing needs in our community. So, it's a rather lengthy document, and I will touch on, kind of highlight on the major aspects of the update. Now, this is a draft document, or this is still in the process of being updated. We have retained the services of Plan West Partners. They're also helping us prepare the housing element. And so, what will happen, well, really, when we get the draft document together, right now, this is just a public hearing to get the, get the community's input and the council's input. When we feel we have the draft completed, what it does, we'll send it to HCD for their initial review of the document. They'll give us their responses back. We'll address those concerns. And then, ultimately, it'll come back again before the planning commission, and then back to the council again for final adoption. I think two, the really main changes from the last five-year period of last housing element, one is our regional housing needs determination. So, roughly around two years prior to the end of the five-year period, HCD, they do a regional housing needs assessment. So, they'll look at the needs of the entire county, and then what they'll do is they'll break down that allocation to different agencies within that county. For us, it's the city. I think the biggest difference you see here is back in the previous housing element, our, I believe countywide, it was over 600 units, and I think about 314 of those were assigned to the city. And what they do is they break it down to very low, low, moderate, and above moderate housing units. Then, HCD came back, I mean, 2012, and they said, well, due to the unprecedented economic downturn, they revised the numbers, and for me, it almost seems like it's more appropriate. But for this five-year period, it's 77 units. So, really, it's a decrease of 237 units for the five-year period, which is pretty significant. Again, that breaks down to 20 very low units, 13 low, I'm sorry, I take that back. Very low is 20 units, 13 low, moderate 10, and 34 above moderate. And also, that doesn't just include the construction of new units as well. It also includes the rehabilitation, or if we've saved some units, and so, I'm looking into that right now. Any units that were constructed after January 1st, 2014, or rehabilitated, would actually qualify to go towards our allocation for this five years. And then, the second one that's really tied to this in a big way was the elimination of our RDA, and in that was the elimination of our housing set aside funds. If you'll recall, I believe we had close to $1 million in housing set aside funds, which that money was really, should be, was allocated to go towards the construction and development of, you know, low to moderate income housing. So, that's really hampered our ability to really attract developers and attract new projects. The one thing that we do have, we still have, as you know, the Oldell Patio property that was actually originally purchased through those funds. So, we've been attempting, we're in the process still of leveraging the use of that property, some other things tied to that, like the sewer and water connections. We're trying to show that, find creative ways to show that, yes, we have, it's kind of the soft cost. We have money upfront that we're putting into this project. It's proving difficult, not just for us, but for all jurisdictions in California, to really go after and either get these home funds, grant funding, or get the tax credits to really make some of these projects happen. But we do, we do have the senior housing project that's in the application right now that's been brought before the council. But we also have some other developers that have approached us over the last year that are also interested in seeing if they can get funding to create some other developments, in particular, the Delnor Point Apartments project, which was slated for 75 units. So, they're looking at re-resurrecting that and bringing that back within the next year after the housing element is certified. So, there's some, you know, good news on the horizon, but really, we're not just focusing on the development of, you know, building new units. We're also really going to do this housing. I'm going to try and focus on the rehabilitation or conversion of units. One good example of that, if you looked at the last, previous housing element, or the current one, that, what's known as SROs, which are single room occupancy units, which are typically between 200 and 300 square feet. I think we, it stated that we would allow by use permit in the construction of, in the R1 district. And what I'm proposing for this next element is that we really change that, allow by use permit in the residential professional zoning district, just for the fact that we have some existing motels that are no longer really functioning as motel, just because of just history, highways moved, they don't function that well anymore. Hopefully, maybe trying to work some of those property owners, see if we can get some of those converted into these single room occupancy units. Really, what that does, it provides another form of transitional housing for folks that may be homeless, or are working their way into first-time housing, they need somewhere, you know, really affordable for them to go and efficient. The other part of the housing element is our regional housing needs assessment. So, we have our housing needs determination, but we, locally here, will do our needs assessment, and we look at things such as population and demographics. Since the last housing element, the 2010 census has come out, and similar 2013 studies have also come out. Well, we look at population and demographics, household characteristics, such as number, size, type of existing households, and characteristics of lower-income households, beginning in employment and income, housing stock characteristics, housing cost and affordability, special housing needs, at-risk housing, and opportunities for energy conservation. And along with this as well, we also conducted a housing condition survey, where we actually had the consultant come to town. We drove him around for a day. We looked at a lot of the housing stock. And really, through that, we're trying to make a determination of the overall condition of the housing stock, you know, properties that are excellent condition, down to your effectively just dilapidated properties. And I think what we found, and I'll look, you know, I know that they put a number in there, 2%, but I think it's probably kind of our at-risk, maybe substandard properties, probably more. probably more about the twenty-five percent range, thirty percent range. We've made a lot of strides over the past few years through our code enforcement program, and we've actually been able to rehabilitate, save a lot of housing units, and we'll continue along with that program as well. Housing constraints, again, we'll look at, government code requires all local governments, again, to look at removing any impediments to obtaining fair housing. So some removals could be if somebody comes with an application, say for a low to moderate income housing project, obviously, we try to do maybe an expedited review process for them, work with them on financial or funding opportunities. Really with that last element found, and I think what we'll find is the new element is we, at a local level here at the city, we don't have a lot of constraints for developing housing, we can typically get applications through pretty quickly. I mean, we're talking probably a month turnaround. Again, the site inventory, I touched upon that already a little bit, and again, our requirement for seventy-seven units this time around. And again, another thing we look at is financial and programmatic resources. Again, that's going, talking to local agencies and seeing what kind of resources are out there. As you're all well aware, we have a housing authority within the city, they provide a baseline, I believe it's five hundred and ninety vouchers per year to help assist with housing needs in the community. What I found interesting too, is looking through the county's housing element, I think, I think it was through HSU, they did a point-in-time survey for homelessness, and they said one of the biggest things that would help prevent that for them was assistance with rental housing. So it's an important program, and we'll continue, that should continue on, we don't see anything that says otherwise it'll be going away within the next five years. So those are kind of the main characteristics of the housing element, the main elements that we're looking at with the housing element, and as you're all aware, of course, HCD does the final approval of the housing element, which also ties to our ability to apply for and obtain CDPG funding as well. But it's also, it's an important roadmap for us and plan for developing and how we develop housing within the city and to make sure that we provide an adequate amount of housing for all segments of the population. With that, I mean, I'll answer any specific questions. Again, that's what we're asking for tonight, though, is the public and the council's input on the housing, on the draft housing element, and we'll take those suggestions and comments, and we'll, you know, include them in that element as we can.
Any council questions, input?
I've sent quite a few questions that I don't need to go over them, I don't think they're...
We've received them, and then we'll reveal them.
Yeah, so they're not anything that we need to go over again. I sent them to Gene, and then I saw Eric, Mr. Taylor, at our meeting this morning in Eureka, and we've discussed them, so no need to stretch out this meeting any longer. They're not anything, I mean, they're just typos and things like that, I think, so, yeah, just minor corrections.
We'll address them.
Absolutely. I have no way of knowing, I have the same questions, probably, and I'll just tell you real briefly, maybe check dates on page thirteen and fourteen and eight twenty-one? I don't know if those are the same questions or not.
No, and again, I reiterate, we're still in the process of updating documents, so yeah, there are probably a lot of dates and those types of things that need to be changed.
On eight five, it talks about two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine and the cost of housing at those times. I think those are very, that was a different, very different environment than it is today. I'm surprised there wasn't more current information on housing.
There is, so I think, you know, we have a consultant that's been assisting us on this, and with the, if you look, they had adjusted some of the tables, but they didn't go back and adjust the text to go along with those tables. So we do have an updated cost, actually, they contacted the Board of Realtors here locally, so they look at the housing trends and the prices of real estate, so we have updated the tables, and we will update the text as well.
Okay. The only other thing, I saw a reference to a definition, or not a definition, but a reference to cold homeless. Is that, can you tell me a little bit about what that definition means? Is that someone that has no shelter whatsoever? Was that...
Yeah, there's, warm homeless is when you're couch-surfing.
Correct. Oh, is that what it is?
Cold homeless is when you're sleeping outdoors.
Okay, I'd not heard that terminology before, so.
And I think the point-in-time count might have, the Community Assistance Network did that, and Councilmember Inea and I assisted with that, unless there was one done after.
There wasn't one done at HSU as well.
Oh, okay. And if the rest of the council wants, we can forward my questions to the rest of the council, so, yeah.
You have other questions?
I just have one, Mr. Taylor. On, I see that item under goals and policies, that C-nine is going to be deleted, and C-ten is going to be rewritten, revised. I just, comparing the actions involved in D-one point one and one point two, is the intent on C-ten to take out the specific reference to men and just make this a generic reference for emergency shelters or facilities?
Correct. And what we're saying in there is that we've, once we adopt that, that we've completed this goal. And then we're mending that with...
In the action portion, it doesn't make any, it's obviously not making reference to families or anything else. If C-nine is being deleted, which does make reference to a general reference to both men, women, and so forth, I just think that it might be appropriate under C-ten to make that a reference to people in general, not just to men. Because we have families, men, women, children, who all may need emergency shelter at any given time.
A person.
The other thing I just, and it's just an observation, when it comes to trying to define affordable housing, it's interesting to me that the income requirements are showing less, and yet, when you look at the cost of actual housing here, I just don't, those two things don't add up to me when you start looking at, you know, thirty-five thousand for a two-bedroom or whatever, as far as buying homes. And when it's projected that the construction of a new home would cost somebody two-hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars just in construction costs without land, you know, I hate to say it, but I think the American dream is dead for the average working family to, for many people, which I know is a challenging when putting together this document, but it is, it's very telling that even in a community as small as ours, just how expensive it is to provide housing, especially if we're talking about somebody having their own home. So I was, it's just challenging to think about that and the things that our constituents in our community struggle with. But thank you for all the work on this, you're doing a great job.
So this, again, is a public hearing where we want input from the public, and so I'm going to open up this public hearing and ask anybody in our audience out there if they'd like to, all right, great. Come up and state your name, city or county, residency, in three minutes.
I'm Katie Leathers, and I'm a resident of the county. Hi, everyone. I wanted to go back and see if I can either make a comment on ordinance seven ninety-one, or this may fall within this, the draft housing element, but when you were talking about emergency housing, and obviously, that does encompass the domestic violence shelter that is in the county, obviously county, not city, most of the grants that are funded for a emergency shelter in those effects is a twenty-one-day, twenty-one-day stay, excuse me, not six. So that may be something that you want to go back and look at while you're defining out emergency shelter and what the city wants to encompass with that, it may be very important. So that was the only comment I wanted to make and include.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other public input on our housing element draft, first draft? All right, seeing the other public input, we're going to close that, and we're going to go on to our next item. Thank you, Eric, for all that explanation. We're going to go on to continuing business, item number eleven, the two thousand and fifteen B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. We have two items on here, A, reject all bids for the two thousand and fifteen B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, and B, authorize staff to amend the plan specifications and re-advertise for bids on the B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Mr. Plaza?
Have Mr. Weir present this item.
Mr. Weir, come on up. Or down.
All right, thank you, Mayor Gasnow, members of the council. Yes, so on October fifth of this year, the council authorized us to go out to bid on the B Street sewer project. This project in general includes the installation of a new thirty-six-inch sewer main between Second Street and the wastewater treatment plant along B Street. It also includes for some access improvements to the neighborhood, including the reconstruction of Howe Drive to allow access during this project to the hotel in the area as well as residents along Lighthouse Way. The bids were due on November ninth, and the spreadsheet before you shows the results of those bids. We had four bidders, which is excellent. That means the project was desirable, and there was a few contractors that were interested in it. Unfortunately, the total funding for this project is approximately one point four million dollars. It's funded through CDPG, and all of the bids came in substantially higher, with the lowest bid being at one point six eight million. That was a McLennan excavation. In evaluating the bids, you can see that the engineer's estimate was fairly close in all categories, you know, if you run across them and look line by line, you'll typically find that the estimate was within someone's bid. However, the one item that it was not close in was a sewer bypass. You can see the average cost of the contractors for the sewer bypass was over three hundred thousand dollars. We had estimated it to be actually under a hundred thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars to be exact. So we contacted several of the contractors, and also contacted the subcontractor listed in all bids, and discussed the sewer bypass, and really, what was the cost driver within that. A lot of it was just the pumping system that's going to be required to bypass this particular sewer main. It's the only main that comes into the treatment plant, there's several connection points that pick up large portions of the sewer that had to be dealt with. So we sat down and tried to value-engineer the project to reduce these costs. Before you is what our value-engineering plan is going to be if the council approves us to amend the plans and specifications. What we're going to do is we're going to detail out for the contractor a couple of different options for the sewer bypass. This is in lieu of what we had previously done, which is basically put it on the contractor, being aware of what sewer needed to be bypassed and where it had, where it needed to be bypassed from. So now we're going to detail that out. There's going to be two options for them. You have option, option A, so here's your existing sewer, with the main lines coming down B Street, as well as Second Street, A Street, and then a portion of the Burch Ocean View coming down Battery Street. Option A, install a pump system here at Second and B Street to bypass the sewer, connect the existing sewer bypass, which is already a pressure line, in B Street, take that directly to the treatment plant, and then build a line. After the main line is built, they'll need to connect all the different laterals from the different main lines. Option B is take the existing line, and what we're going to do in these plans is we're going to modify the design and the alignment of the new sewer line, and we're going to actually move it to the west approximately three or four feet. This will allow this construction of this new main to be put in from the treatment plant portion down through Front Street, almost to the Front Street intersection anyway. This builds about sixty percent of the project without having to put in a bypass at all. Then the contractor would come in, they would bypass from the Battery Street, taking that sewage into the plant, as well as the Burch Ocean View. They could then build the portion that's going to the treatment plant, they could connect the laterals in that area, they then could move their bypass pumps down to B Street, bypass into the new main, and then build that portion between Second Street and Front Street. Then those sewer line would be complete. So this is, this is going to be the detailed plan. The other modification that we're proposing is in the alarm monitoring, and I think this is a huge cost driver in the project. Right now, the contractor would have to monitor the bypass twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There is some room for cost savings here. The contractor can install alarms in the bypass system, so if anything were to go wrong, a pump failure, or anything like that, or the sewer starts to back up, there could be an alarm call-out. This would be similar to what we already have with the sewer lift station. The city currently operates and maintains twenty-one sewer lift stations throughout the collection system. We have alarms just like what would be installed here on each of those, they simply notify us, then we have one of the city personnel come out and evaluate the situation. So we feel this is a substantial cost savings, and talking with the bypass contractor to the tune of, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars in savings. Sewer bypass is an area that you truly can call value-engineering. Typical value-engineering means, you know, there's some reduction in cost. In this situation, if we can save money for the sewer bypass, the end result to the city and to the community is still going to be the same with a new sewer main and new streets. Then, like to open it up to the council for any questions?
So Eric, with these new options also, it'll be, have less street closures, is that correct, with the new bypasses?
The street closures themselves will be the same, because you're going through the intersection, but there'll be a lot less pumps installed, especially in and around the residential neighborhoods.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Weir?
The street closure, are you talking about during construction? Which, which do you think is the best option?
You know, it's a little bit difficult to say, is, you know, it's, you don't really like to get into means and methods, which is really what this is for a contractor. For me personally, I would think that option B would have the biggest benefit, as you don't have a bypass at all for the majority of the project when you start out, although there is advantages to option A, and that's what we discussed in-house. Option B, you don't have any bypass for a while, you set up your bypass, you can make your connection to the treatment plant, then you have to move your bypass. With option A, you set it up one time, and you're done. So a lot of that's going to be logistics with the contractor and his subcontractor. For me, I would go with option B.
I'm asking you, because I'm not an engineer, so...
But they both have merit, which is why we wanted to, we're going to specify and get into means and methods. We still wanted to have the contractor have some flexibility with their plan.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
So the, Mr. Weir, the alarm monitoring that you're discussing is part of item number four under the bypass? That's not a separate line item on this spreadsheet, correct?
Correct, and really, it wasn't, it wasn't included in this original project. It was up to the contractor itself to take care of the bypass. Now, the contractor's going to need to install these alarms as part of their bypass, so now it will be part of item four in the new bid.
Okay. The other, just an observation in looking at this, a couple of observations. Number one, there's some huge discrepancies amongst the contractors for some of these items, which I find interesting, that I would think sewer pipe is sewer pipe, but obviously, it's not, because some contractors bid it out at less than what we engineered, and others, their bid is almost twice what our estimates are. So some of that stuff is, I find interesting. One of the ones that, just looking at it, that I found really interesting is this, that one of the contractors identified traffic control at almost three times what it was bid out at, and if they had just came in at what the bid was, we'd only be just over a hundred thousand dollars away from the bid itself. And so I just, I don't know, as we go back through this, if, hopefully, maybe, having gone through this process, there's a little bit better understanding with the contractors of what the needs really are, that maybe when they come back, that we can get a more accurate representation of what needs to be done, or maybe we need to learn from the contractors that... to learn from the contractors that what we think needs to be done isn't exactly right, one way or the other. Just, I found it interesting that there's as many discrepancies as there are.
You know, that's correct, and so do I, and that's what makes engineers' estimates. It's hard. Like I say, you know, you can find our engineer's estimate typically in one of the bids somewhere, and it is difficult. We have discussed some of the discrepancies with some of the contractors, and we'll continue to do so to try to provide clarity where we can. And also, you know, we'll go back out to bid, and we're going to ask that if any contractors have any questions, to please let us know, because it seems like there were some questions in this one.
You're not asking for our opinion on one of these options, are you? You're just asking to put this back out to bid, right?
Yeah, correct. We're going to give the contractors both options, unless the council wants to give direction.
No, no, I don't want to give direction on As or Bs. I just want to get it built.
Well, and so do we. Timing is also important because this is a CDBG-funded project, as the council's fully aware. If we can spend half of our 2014 CDBG grant in a certain amount of time, which is this spring, I believe, then we will be eligible to apply for CDBG funding again. The timing of this, because it's a rebid, we only need to put it out to bid for 14 calendar days, so it is going to be a quick turnaround. You can see the schedule was included in the staff report, but basically, we're expecting to be back before the council December 21st, taking a look at the bid results from this rebid.
All right, any other questions, sir? Okay, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on the B Street Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project and taking it back out to bid? Seeing no public comment, closed public comment. Bring you back to the council. Let's see. So, do we need to do a motion on the reject all bids or consensus, or?
I'll make a motion to reject all bids and authorize staff to re-advertise for the bids. With the amended plans and specifications on the B Street Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project.
Do we get all that? Are we good? All right. So, we do have a motion in a second? Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, I'm sure everybody that's still here is waiting for this incredible new business that we have in front of us, and our first one is number 12, the confirmation of Delano Solid Waste Management Authority public member appointment.
And Mr. Ward is in the audience to present this item.
Mr. Ward, please come on down.
Thank you, Mayor Gasnow, members of the city council. I'm happy to introduce you to Pat Black, who has recently been appointed as an additional commissioner, the public commissioner for the Delano Solid Waste Management Authority Board. Under our bylaws and joint powers agreement, it is a requirement that this appointment be approved by the city council and the board of supervisors annually. So, that's the action for you today to approve the appointment of Pat Black to as commissioner to the Delano Solid Waste Management Authority, and she's here in case you have further questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Ward or for newly appointed Solid Waste Commissioner Patricia Black? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, close that, and we'll bring you back. Do we have to take action, vote, confirmation?
Yeah, we need a vote to approve the appointment.
All right. Anybody?
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Patricia Black as the public commissioner for the Delano Solid Waste Management Authority.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and amazing how easy that was.
Congratulations and thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We need a half hour speech at this point, would you please?
You can do it in Spanish.
Oh, wait, she has a meeting tomorrow. She can do it then. Thank you. Okay, on to item number 13. Consider for approval in-kind contribution of the cultural center to allow Looking to the Future in partnership with the Humane Society to host a holiday party and dance at the cultural center on December 12, 2015, with all proceeds to benefit the development of the beachfront dog park. Park, beachfront park, dog park. Take action as necessary, as appropriate. That was a little hard to say.
Ms. Scott will present this item, Mayor.
Ms. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor Gasnow, members of the council. So, as you are well aware, our dog park has been out and in the public, getting a lot of traction. A lot of people are talking about it in the community. And, as you're also probably aware, we have a Facebook group which developed over the summer months called Looking to the Future. And this group originally was intended to be a place, there were some groups online that were looking to the past, looking to the history of Crescent City. And, the initial administrator of the group wanted to have a place where people could look forward and share some ideas. The idea took off rapidly, and within about a month, the group grew to about 2,000 members, and they decided that with that much incitement and enthusiasm, instead of just sitting around talking about it, they wanted to try to engage people to do something about it. And, so, that group did some polls and did some asking of their membership on what sort of things in the community they really wanted to participate in and see happen. And, one of the things that came to the forefront of that discussion was Beachfront Park Master Plan. So, with that, we've got the Looking to the Future folks here tonight, and they had made a request to you to put on a holiday party and dance at the cultural center to raise funds for the dog park. So, shortly after that, a request came in, and I started working on the staff report for this. We also met with the Humane Society, who was showing some interest in raising some funds for the dog park. So, we decided to get these two great groups of folks together, and the chemistry just exploded in our conference room, and the ideas were zinging all over the place. And, so I think that this group is really excited to try and make this happen. We're starting to get some hard figures together. We're starting to get more and more in-kind donations of services and goods, and this would be a great step in that development. So, what they proposed is that all of the proceeds from this would go directly into the bucket that we've established with the Beachfront Park Fund for the dog park. And, so there's no sort of overhead coming off of that. There's no sort of question about what's going to happen in those funds. It's directly for community benefit, and that's why they asked for this partnership with us. As you noted in the staff report, the Humane Society has kindly offered use of their insurance to cover the event. They said that their insurance does not get enough use, and this is a great use for it. There are some musical interests, some musical talent that are interested in performing. We have a caterer that's interested in catering. So, I'd like to actually introduce you to Marie and let her speak for a minute as our speaker from Looking to the Future.
Great.
Come on up.
Thank you, Kimmy. My name is Marie Biggers. I'm the program manager for Crescent City Looking to the Future. I am a county resident, and I'm here representing not only our advisory board, but our members. We have been back and forth on this on our Facebook group. We even voted on a name, which is the Furbol. Yeah, I had some doubts about that. It just sounds so wrong. But, that's what our members want.
What are the cats saying about that?
I know, I know. We have really pushed to put the Beachfront Park Project forefront. We really want to see it get done, and we want to see the dog park first. It is the closest, and we have so much enthusiasm over it. Partnering with the Humane Society, the extra that they brought to the table was awesome. It's, you know, I just see a really good partnership going there also. But, we are a new group, so we do not have a very large budget. If we cannot get the cultural center in kind, we'll have to go to a different venue, and we won't make as much money. We'll have to put money out there, and we don't want to do that. We can also sell more tickets for the cultural center, many more tickets. My main reason for wanting the cultural center is that it's front and center, right where we're doing things. Kind of gives a glimpse of the beachfront park area and what we want to see get done there. Other than that, I don't have too much to say about it. I really encourage a yes vote on this, and I did want to say that we're kind of getting cramped on time. We want to do this on December 12th, so we've got a lot of planning to do once we do decide the venue. Thank you guys very much for your consideration, and one way or another, no matter where it is, we hope to see you guys out there.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, is there any, any public comment on this? Please come on up.
Hello, council. I'm Heidi Keim. I am a resident of the city, and I'm also on the board of a nonprofit, POP, which I'm sure you're familiar with, Promote Our Pool. So, it's my understanding that a social media group is asking for an in-kind donation of the cultural center, which is roughly $700, for a dog park. I'm all in favor of a dog park. I would love to see a dog park. I think that's fantastic. I'm part of a group that partners with the city on every single event we have. We raise money for scholarships for children for swimming. All of our money, it goes right into the city via the pool, which is a revenue generating feature that our city has. A dog park isn't. So, I'm actually kind of surprised to see this on the agenda tonight at all, because I'm under the impression that we have a policy in place that we don't give waivers to nonprofits for events such as this. So, I hate to be Debbie Downer, you know, but I'm just hoping that we don't have lots of in-kind contribution requests coming forth. I think this is a precedence that maybe the city might want to think twice about granting. Thank you. Thank you for listening to my point of view.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing no other public comment, I'm going to bring you back to the council. Any other discussion?
We appreciate POP very much, the council, and I know the community does as well. But, just for a point of clarification, the pool does not generate revenue for us. In fact, we actually lose money. So, I hope you understand that, that we don't exactly make money on the swimming pool. And, that's why the POP is so important to us, because it really helps us. Like, you bought the pool blanket, and you've done so many things for us. So, POP is really, really a vital part of this important asset that the community has and the city has. So, I hope you understand that part. And, the dog park won't generate revenue for us either, but it's something that the entire community wants. So, and we're hoping that as we develop the rest of Beachfront Park, that it ultimately will help generate revenue for the city. That's the vision that we have. So, I hope that the community understands that. I'm just, I just hope that, I just would like to make a clarification with that issue.
That will not be on the record. So, anybody else have any other comments?
I do.
Yeah, please.
I think that there is no doubt that in granting an in-kind donation, that it will set a precedent. That's not, we can't sidestep that. The question that we have to ask as a council is, are we willing to set that precedent based on the value that we place on this event and on the future of Beachfront Park, knowing that we will have to live with that precedent? To say it's not, that we're not setting precedent would be disingenuous on our part. We're going to set some kind of precedent because we're taking a nonprofit now under United Charities, and we're providing something to them that, once we provide it, others will have the right to say, well, you provided it to this group. Will you provide it to us? That will put an even greater responsibility on the council to evaluate every request from this point forward, and that's a responsibility that we'll have to take if we approve this. I mean, that's just the reality. We will have to take the responsibility. It won't be a simple thing and simply to say, well, we don't do that. Because if we do it, then we have to be willing to ask that question every time somebody makes a request. So, the question comes back to us, are we willing to take that responsibility on and evaluate those things? Because, in essence, we're removing that from staff being able to say, well, this is the way it works, because we're taking action here, and so the responsibility will come back to us on a case-by-case basis in the future. And I think that's what we have to decide, whether or not we feel strongly enough about this event and about trying to do something that may lead to the construction of a dog park, if that is important enough for us to set this precedent. And, that's the question that the council needs to make tonight, how we feel about that.
And, in the past, we had been giving waivers or no fees to nonprofits, and that was before councilmember Enscore got on the council. And, the cultural center itself is another, we do not, we do not generate revenue with the cultural center either, and that's why we stopped making waivers for nonprofits. So, historically, we have in the past done that, and then we said, no, we can't do that anymore. The cultural center, we're losing money on it as well. So, we have in the past, and then we quit doing that. Maybe, I've been on the council seven years now, so we probably quit doing it maybe six years ago. I can't remember when we did budget evaluations and looked at the cultural center's great expense to us. So, it goes back and forth, and depending on who's on the council and what our overall budget is. So, we have in the past done it, and maybe we'll do it again tonight. I don't know. It depends on the entire council's vote, but it goes back and forth, in other words. And, so, we don't necessarily need to set a precedent if we make a decision tonight on one way, and we will do our budget evaluation again in the spring and redetermine our policy and decide which way we're going to go. And, we have a great finance director, a great city manager, and great staff that help us make those decisions along with our council.
Just a couple of questions. So, was there a policy put in place that would keep us from allowing this at this time? And, my second question is, was that policy in reaction to nonprofits making money for themselves, not holding an event that would put 100% of the proceeds into improving our city?
Mayor, may I answer? I don't know of a policy that's in place. Kind of the policy that staff's been going by on 501(c) or nonprofits that come to the city, typically, you know, they're out raising money for their organization, and they, you know, the proceeds of those funds go into their organization, and, you know, once they pay for the insurance, the administration costs, things like that, and then they may donate money, you know, to the city, and POP is a good example. They've been a great partner, and, you know, once they kind of go through that process, then there's some funds that they do raise that go to the pool, to the scholarships, the pool blankets, things to that nature. You know, this is, there's some slight differences, you know, possibly not a whole lot of differences, but the main difference is this group came to the city saying, hey, we want to partner. You know, we see that the city's vision and the council policy, you know, this year is to try and, you know, highlight the beachfront park and implement... you know, this year is to try and, you know, highlight the beachfront park and, and implement, you know, pieces of this beachfront park. The city council, you know, earlier this year adopted a financial bucket system. I don't know if we actually named it or call it, you know, something, but, you know, we're calling it the dog park, or the beachfront park buckets, to, to where we are asking for donations or collecting money to fill those buckets, so we can, you know, make, you know, these improvements to the, you know, pieces of, of the beachfront park. The, you know, kind of traction and, and of the community at this point is, hey, let's collect those dollars for the dog park. Let's focus on the dog park, so we can get that done and, and do a true community partnership. City, will you, you know, partner with us to make this happen? And, you know, so far, the city's, you know, wanting to see, you know, the partnerships with the community to, to build this park. The, uh, this request is for the use of the Cultural Center, which would be the, the city's contribution, to help raise monies to go into the construction of beachfront park. All the proceeds will go into that beach, or that dog park bucket that we've established for beachfront park. There's no, none of the dollars, from my understanding, that are being raised is, is going to, you know, the nonprofit to, you know, cover, you know, administration costs, insurance costs, things like that. This, this entire event, it, you know, costs are covered. The insurance is covered by the Humane Society. They're looking for a place to hold the event. The cost, there's, you know, it's not rented, you know, on that weekend at this point. If it was, then, you know, decided wouldn't be before you for that date. The overall cost of the city, I forget if it's outlined in the staff report or not, but it's, you know, you know, the staff time to set up and clean up, you know, for the center, and then, of course, electricity and things like that that would be used. But that's our, our contribution. So there's a slight difference there between, you know, a nonprofit putting on an event, you know, 5K or fundraiser, or something to the pool to go into their, their funds. You know, all, all the proceeds are going into that dog park fund. Does that make sense?
Any other comments?
And I don't know if you'd close the public comment.
Oh, I did close the public comment.
I, this is an interesting dilemma, but I think that if other nonprofits want to come and do a fundraiser and give all of the money again to the city, and it looks like it would be a positive thing for the city, then I'd be willing to entertain those groups as well.
I think that's the precedent you're setting, is, you know, all proceeds and funds going to the city for specific...
I mean, yeah. So the other thing is, this is, this is a project that we've tried for years to get off the ground. And, and this could be just a real catalyst for getting things moving down in beachfront park. And we have a group of a couple of thousand people now that, that follow you, and, and I appreciate the work you're doing and the outreach that you're doing. And, and the potential for actually moving along on this dream that we have for beachfront, that would benefit the, the beach, to have more activities down there. I, I, I don't think we can pass this up, and, and so I think I'll be voting for this.
Not to beat a dead horse to the ground here, but we are using a city asset that is laying fallow to help get funds to construct another city asset. Win-win. It's win-win-win. And if POP wanted to do that, which they also help out, yes, and work with the city asset, I wouldn't be opposed to them coming forward and using it also. So on that note, I will entertain any motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the in-kind contribution of the Cultural Center to allow Looking to the Future to have, hold a holiday party dance at the Cultural Center on December 12th, with the proceeds and benefits going towards the beachfront dog park bucket. And take, so...
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we do have a motion in a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Inskor?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and best of luck to you guys. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to item number 14, mayor and mayor pro temp election. So every year, as a sitting council, we rotate our mayorship. And this last time, I have been the mayor, of course, and Rich Aneah was the mayor pro temp. Of course, Rich Aneah has resigned for health reasons, and we have Mr. Short here to take his place. So we have a little hitch in the old program. So at this time also, the, the preceding year's mayor gets to tell you a little bit about all the great things that happened in the city, like, I'm going to take credit for it, which I cannot, because our staff is actually the ones who do all the great work. If you were at the town hall meeting, I went through in about five minutes of all the millions of dollars and the great projects that our city has done in the last past year. Few of them are, as we redesigned our shoreline RV park, Fred Endert Municipal Pool renovations, we did new roof, and we put in some access for people. B Street Main Line Sewer, and then we had our sewer loan modification, which I take all the credit for. Mr. Hawley saved our taxpayers, like, what, $14 million, you know, $15 million. New business expansions happen in the city, Big Five, North Woods expansion, Rumiano's expansion, Bounce-a-Palooza, all sorts of Little Caesars, everybody coming to town. And this is all of the stuff that our city staff is always trying to do, is make our city a better place for everybody to live and to come in. And so I can't take credit for that, but fortunately, I just happen to be sitting in the, in the big seat at the time that all this is happening. So there's a lot of stuff coming up in the future. As you saw today, we, you know, our B Street sewer thing, all these improvements help people come into our, our community. Nobody would, you know, build stores. CVS Pharmacy's coming into our, they're building a store. We have Autozone. We have all these other ones. They would not come in our community if they didn't see promise in our community. So these are all the great things that our city staff has been doing to keep our city together and running very smoothly. So lots of great things. I can't really take credit for it, but I'm the one who signs all the checks, so. And the resolutions. So what we're going to do now is, do we take public comment on the mayor, mayor pro temp?
That's a discussion with the council.
A discussion with the council. So we're going to have a discussion with the council, and we'll bounce it back and forth. And then we will take nominations to see who or if I do get... So with that, anybody want to start these discussions?
Before we do that, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your mayorship. I think you've done a wonderful job, and I'm sure that we all would agree in you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Agreed. Well, I can start the logical discussion.
You know, I, with Mr. Aneah leaving, it was different, right? One thing I've liked about being on this board is we have a normal succession. So there aren't those questions about who sits at the, usually, unless you have a real loose cannon, you don't have those discussions about, about who's going to be mayor next, the next year, because the first one gets to basically apprentice, the mayor pro temp apprentices for a year. And that was Mr. Aneah. And of course, Mr. Aneah was already mayor once, so he, his apprenticeship wasn't quite as necessary. But we had a pretty good idea that Mr. Aneah was going to be mayor this year. This next year, in 2016, is going to be a, it has the possibility of being a tumultuous one. And that, in part, is because four of the seats on, on the city council are going to be running for election. So my interest is that we find a, a route that gives us the, the most stability during times of, of at least apparent instability as we look toward these elections in 2016. One in June and, and, and three more in, in, what is it, November? So, you know, with that in mind, Mr. Gasnow's become very proficient at, at running these meetings. He would provide, I think, the most stability at this time. And so I'd be inclined to, to consider Mr. Gasnow for another term. I know that's a little bit of a departure from what we've done, but it's not unprecedented. So I, since we're just talking, that's, that's kind of what I have on my mind.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
I'm not much of a, of a campaigner. I didn't campaign much when I ran, but I, I guess I will just make the only, two observations. Number one, I, I don't know that, that serving as pro temp necessarily needs to be seen as a requirement to be able to, to fulfill the responsibilities of mayor. That's one. Secondly, only one of us will not be campaigning this year that won't have the distraction, possibly, of, of the responsibilities that go with, with doing that, and could focus their entire attention on whatever's going on with the city. So with that, I will end my campaigning. That's the extent of what I will share, but...
If I can just respond real quickly, given that's known, and I appreciate what you said, my only thought is that the consistency on the council is going to be important. And if in fact you were mayor pro temp next year, that would assure that we'd have an experienced person in, in 2000...
No doubt.
You know what I mean? You're the only one of us that we know will be here in, in 2016.
Lord willing.
Well, Lord, I mean, that's true. So that was, that was my reasoning, but...
I don't know. I, I, I wouldn't mind being mayor again either. So I will just throw that out there, because... I'll just throw that out there.
You can weigh in on it. You're official. On that note, I'm going to have to run in June. Don't know how that's going to go, so I'm going to decline.
That was really easy.
I think, working with Mr. Inskor in, on the Planning Commission, I'm very impressed with his ability to lead. Impressed with Ron also. I agree with the, the consistency need. It's, if you had to choose between one or the other, it'd be almost an impossible choice. Both are good men, and very much able to, to do the job.
There you go. So, so, so my input on this, and, and the logical question, and the reason, Catherine, that we haven't been considering, because you could actually become, well, I mean, you, you have your election in June, and then if you win that election, you'll have concerns going the other way, even though you don't take office until January as a supervisor. So that was one of the considerations that we were, that we talked about, at least in my mind. And, you know, I, I don't mind being mayor. It's already in my schedule, already doing it. I wouldn't mind doing another term. But if, if somebody feels strongly enough to, to do it other, I could take four meetings off of my schedule for the year, for each month, and, you know, and, and just become another council person again, which is, is no big deal. So, I mean, you know, continuity, we can, can you, continue on and go with, go with myself, or if anybody else will, and I have no objections to somebody else taking over as mayor. So with that, any other discussion? If not, let's throw it up for, for a vote, see what happens.
Well, I'll make a motion, Mr. Gasnow, that Mr. Gasnow be appointed mayor, or that we accept him as mayor for the next year, 2016.
I can second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second for myself to continue as mayor into the next year. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Inskor?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you. All right, now for my successor in the year after, mayor pro temp. I'll move that Mr. Inskor be appointed as the mayor pro temp.
I will second that one also.
So we have a motion for councilmember Inskor to be mayor pro temp this next year. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Inskor?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you very much. My fabulous coup has worked again. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you. It's, it's been a pleasure serving as mayor, and it'll be a pleasure serving in the next year. We are now on to our legislative matters. Are there any legislative matters?
One legislative matter, councilmember Murray, Chief Minsel, and Mr. Taylor, Community Director, attended a seminar today in Eureka on medical marijuana issues. Do you guys want to update the council on that?
Yes, it, it's regarding the new, new bills. SB 643 and AB 266. And we had a, a great panel of speakers, and we had nearly every city from the Redwood Empire Division clear down to Cloverdale attending. And the recommendation, since we don't have any municipal code ordinances in place, is that we, we need to have something in place by March 1st of next year, so that we won't want to direct staff to put it on the Planning Commission agenda for next meeting, December 10th. And so I'm hoping that we will all agree to that and have Mr. Taylor put it on the agenda, so that we can be in compliance and get ourselves an ordinance in place. And if you want to add to that, Eric?
Yeah, I can elaborate a little bit. And what Ms. Murray's referring to, or the new regulations state that if local jurisdictions, well, it really, the biggest part pertained to cultivation of marijuana. What the state has now done is said that they're requiring that anybody who wants to cultivate marijuana get a local permit, and then they have to go to the state and obtain a state permit. And I think it pertains to anybody, if you're a medical marijuana user, it's 100 square feet. You're allowed up to 100 square feet. Anything over that, you have to get a state permit. If you're a caregiver, I think it's up to 500 square feet of space. You have to come get a state permit. But what Ms. Murray's referring to, if we don't have a local ordinance in place regulating the cultivation of marijuana, then come March 1st, we're pretty much out of luck. And if anybody wants to, they just go ahead and apply directly to the state for licensing. And we really don't have a say in it at that point.
And, and these bills are designed to help us maintain our local control. That was specifically built into them. So it's very important that we get that in place.
And recommend, just a council direction, to prepare those ordinances and take it through the process and get those adopted by March 1st.
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Any other legislative matters? All right. What about city manager report?
I have nothing.
Nice. You're on vacation though, aren't you? All right. That's something to report. All right, council members, who would like to go first?
Well, I will. I'm here. On the 5th, I attended the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority for Ms. Murray. We had a great presentation by the staff and our airport director, talking about the completion of the project out there, the, around the, the runways and, and the preparation for the terminal project, working towards that in the next two years. Also, on the 5th, I attended the...
Also, on the 5th, I attended the chamber mixer at the Fire Protection Hall District Office, where the Camel May, the book, was presented and read, that told the story of the boat from Japan, and we had presentations by Cindy Henderson, the author. We even had a live from Japan Skype reports, and so that was really exciting, well, well-attended as well. On the, the 6th, I attended a veterans' assembly out at Redwood School, and also attended the Veterans Resource Day here in town. On the Tuesday, the 10th, I, we had a visitor bureau meeting where we continued to talk about ways to promote our, our, our area. On the 11th, participated in the Veterans Day Parade, and also provided a proclamation on behalf of the city at the Veterans Luncheon. On the 12th, I attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting, where we got some updates regarding what would constitute an emergency declaration, and some clarity by that from our executive director, Tamara Legend, and I think that was very helpful. On the 13th, Friday the 13th, attended a chamber seminar, where our featured speaker was Matt Leitner, our director, who also gave us some insight as to the next step out at the airport, and gave us some pictures of the proposed terminal and where it's going to be located. And that was very exciting. And also, we had a city and county two-by-two meeting that afternoon, where we talked about some joint issues that both the city and the county are working towards, so. And I, too, am going on vacation soon as we finish.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Okay.
You guys carpooling?
I'm flying. Fly Penn Air. They do a fantastic job, and so I've been very pleased.
All right. Want to say, Councilman Enscore looked very dapper in his Navy uniform in the parade. Thank you for your service, sir. I also wanted to say, Mr. Vu, had many people mention that the Monge veterans were not in the parade this year, and they missed them. So if you would pass that on to your, your veterans in your group, that would be appreciated. Keep rolling, keep rolling. Went to a meeting with the Coast Guard Auxiliary, their safety meeting, quarterly meeting. You may recall the announcement in the paper for the employment fair, the employment event that Albert Sea Foods was having. It was announced there at that meeting that Albert Sea Foods was changing their freezing process for our pink shrimp that may result in the majority of those 100 people getting hired having year-round jobs.
Wow.
Process in those shrimp. So hopefully, that will run to fruition. Thought that was excellent news.
Yeah.
Other than that, Mr. Mayor, finished with my City Crescent City education program with Mr. Taylor, getting a tour of the blight problem that we have in our city. He's, he's got a big job to do. And, and Mr. Weir taking me around and, and getting me well acquainted with our public works system. Thank you, Mr. Weir.
Excellent. Now we just got to get you on some committees.
Next meeting, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Catherine, you want to go?
Thank you. On the 4th, I attended the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Meeting that Congressman Huffman has put together, and we will, we're finalizing a white paper that will be going out to the public, hopefully, to explain our process and the members of the group, and what, what we're doing, and, and how it's, how the, the stakeholders group is proceeding. So I hope that we, we are in the final draft of that, and I hope it'll be out to the public soon. I think that's a really important step, because I think there's a lot of misinformation about what's happening with the group, and we are making progress, so stay tuned for that. Thank you, Councilmember Enscore, or Mayor Pro Temp, I should say, for attending the airport meeting. For me, I was on my way en route to the Coastal Cities, Coastal Counties, Coastal Commission meeting, and that was a really good meeting. We had a panel of our coastal cities and coastal counties, and then the coastal commission. It was, it was very, very powerful, because we had our cities and counties talking to the coastal commission and staff about our experiences and what we need from the coastal commission. And we had a great presentation by the planning director from Santa Cruz County, and I, I felt like it was very powerful, and, and I believe that they heard us, so it was a great experience, and I think it was worth my attending and all those teleconference meetings that I have been participating in. And then I went to Congressman Huffman's social event this last Saturday, and I'm mentioning this in particular because he talked about some of the things that he's been doing back in Washington, and one significant issue ties in with the Last Chance Grade, and that Congress has passed a transportation funding bill that is longer than two minutes. It's, I believe, two years, and that, that may help us with roads, not just in our county, but throughout the state and throughout the nation. So, I don't know what it covers exactly, but I, I'm, and I'm not sure what the number of the bill is. He didn't mention that. The other significant issue that he talked about for our area is that we know that the crab industry may not be operational this year. We don't know what, what's going to happen with the crab, crabbing season this year, and because of that, he is looking into emergency funding for our crab industry here from the feds. And so, hopefully, that won't need to happen, but if, if it does, he's prepared to help bring funding into our crab, crab industry here in, in, in our region. I feel that that's really, really significant. He works very hard for us. And then, as you know, the chief and Eric Taylor and I all attended the medical marijuana workshop this morning down in Eureka. And I wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Do you want me to?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Please.
Okay. First, I also attended the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Meeting, and, and the white paper should be out soon, and I think they have interest to many, many people. The Senior Center Personnel Committee had another meeting. We're meeting almost every other Monday, trying to hammer out these personnel policies. It's, it's an interesting process, and as chair, I'm anxious for that to be done. I attended a lunch with Mr. Palazzo and the president of Humboldt State, and I believe her name is Lisa Rossbacher. Have you met her? Anyway, she was there in a community meeting, and, and basically asking how we can help each other, how, how we can have mutual projects, and, and how Humboldt State and, and we may, may cooperate to, to do good things in the area. So I appreciated that outreach from Humboldt State. I, we had a solid waste meeting on the 1st, and that was to select the public member whom you met and who's still back there. I know, she's sorry she didn't get up and say a big speech. But we did have that, and I thought that went smoothly. Transportation Commission, as, as Councilmember Murray mentioned, I was at that meeting. And then, on the, on Veterans Day, I got to the parade a little bit late, but I did make it to the Veterans Luncheon, and I, I was able to sit with Mr. Enscore and, and listen to his, his moving proclamation on behalf of the veterans. I'm sorry I missed him, missed him being in uniform. That would have been fun to watch, but it was a nice luncheon. And, and finally, I, the news that the Christmas parade is back on was good news, and that's going to happen on the 27th of November. So hopefully, everyone will be there and, and be able to see that. Yes.
There will be a community event this Saturday?
Night to noon.
Night to noon to clean up the plaza, put up some decorations, so always welcome to come out and assist with that.
All right. Are you done? All right, thank you very much. Let's see, back on the 5th, I was also at the Komo May, the Miracle Boat, reading of, of the book that they did from the boat that came across Japan and, and, and then sent back, and then our kids went there, their kids came here. And right now, they are planning to send our kids, some more of our kids, back over to Japan again. So those talks are, are going on as we speak right now. And then, like Mr. Holly said, we had the special solid waste meeting for bringing our public member on the 10th. Veterans Day Parade was very enjoyable, and I was so happy that it did not rain on us there. Just a little bit cold, but it was good to see everybody there. Then the county two-by-two, and that's pretty much the extent of my meetings, so. On that note, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting on December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, 2015, 5:00 PM for our co-session, and 6:00 PM for anything. Thank you very much for being here.